One P M, so we're gonna start the meeting. And I apologize ahead of time, my voice is all over the place. Unfortunately. And. We will do the best to carry the meeting, so um. Council, I'm gonna need your support as always to help me get through. All right? So I'd like to call this meeting to order today, Tuesday, February twenty 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 four at seven oh one P M. This is a virtual work session for the city of Mount Rainier. I'm gonna move over to roll call, Valerie Woodall.
I'm here, I'm here.
Sorry, guys, I'm trying to speak as loud as I can, okay? Jerestofas?
I'm here.
Daniel Carter?
I know.
I'm here.
Luke Chesek? Luke is not here yet, but he'll be joining us soon, okay? So um. Send me a message on the on the chat to let me know he's here. Okay, so now we call the meeting to order. Uh, we're gonna go ahead and review the agenda. Uh, Jared being the senior um council member currently on the line key. Go ahead and um read through the agenda, please.
Yeah, of course, Mayor. Uh, agenda of the work session of the mayor and city council, city of Mount Rainier, Maryland. Virtual work session, Tuesday, February twentieth, twenty twenty four, seven P M. Items for discussion. Number one, call to order. Number two, review of the agenda. The city, uh, the mayor and city council will review the agenda for the meeting, adding or deleting topics of interest or discussion. Number three, presentation and discussion on building application for thirty eight oh eight thirty third street, Mount Rainier, Maryland. The mayor and city council will have a presentation from the owner of thirty eight oh eight thirty third street. Number four, presentation and discussion on the proposed F Y twenty five budget. The the city manager, uh, Mr. Kamali, will present the proposed F Y twenty five budget to the mayor and council and have a discussion on tax rate. Number five, presentation discussion on letter support from Mount Rainier, volunteer fire department company three. Council member Danielle Carter will present a letter and ask the council support the Mount Rainier volunteer fire department's desire to keep their company number three. Uh, number six, presentation of minutes. The city clerk will present the following minutes to the mayor and council. January sixteenth, twenty twenty four, work session, February sixth, twenty twenty four, legislative meeting. Number seven, adjournment.
Thank you so much, Jared, please make note that Luke is also here. As well, um, I am gonna be adding one item to the agenda. As you guys know, we have our own community conversation slide item for each of us, and as Mayor had one as well. So this Friday, the city of Mount Rainier, along with Mount Rainier P T O and Thomas Stone P T O, will be hosting um movie in a potluck, so I'm gonna be requesting funds to be able to buy some food. Originally, I was gonna do it on my personal pocket, but upon consideration, I cannot be feeling, you know, fulfilling the bill for the city of Mount Rainier every time it's needed. Um, and that's what the funds are there for, so I'm asking the council approval to add to the agenda um to be able to utilize the funds from my community like community conversation line item, okay? Can I get um, I'm gonna make a motion, can I get a second? Thank you guys so much, Melly, can you go ahead and add it, please? Thank you. Any objections, abstentions, here are none. The item will be added. Thank you, Melly. And while we do that, we're gonna go ahead and move to the next uh line items. So we do have a resident here, presentation, discussion and building application.
Mayor.
This is a ten minute discussion on thirty eight oh eight thirty third street, Mount Rainier, Maryland. Alma, you have the floor, is the resident here?
Yes, good evening, um, mayor and council city, uh, manager. Um, thank you for having us here one more time. Um, we're here to do an introduction of a presentation for thirty eight oh eight thirty third street, as many of you um know. This property um has been vacant since twenty nineteen and it's uh, you know, in excitement that that we know that it's getting um the repairs needed. Uh, Mr. James Yonkos is here um to talk to us a little bit about what they're gonna be doing.
Thank you so much, Mr. Yonkos, the floor is here, can you let us know uh what um what the project is and any information you could provide to us?
Yes, um, excuse me, I I'm the owner and I will be the contractor on it, it's a fairly uh hopefully straightforward project. Um, it's basically renovating, as you all are probably aware, that the property has sat empty for a while. Um, but uh the bones, everything else, it's still very nice little little bungalow. Um, and what I'm doing on the exterior, um, basically repairing the porch um on the front. And the major work is in the bathroom and the kitchen, the rest is gonna be, you know, the finishing floors and but not a a whole lot of moving walls around or or changing the the basic property. Um, as um, let's see, if you wanna scroll down, or I can share a screen, just there's a photo just showing sort of the condition of the of the current porch. Um, which is pretty deteriorated and um have been allowed to sit and rot out, so um again, as far as the exterior goes, not changing the size, so as far as the site plan goes, there there are no changes there. It's it's a very strangely tight site, it's a twenty foot wide house on a twenty five foot wide lot. So there's actually an easement, as you can see along um the property north of this or planned, yes, I guess that would be north um to even get to the backyard, very tight site. Um, again, if you zoom in a little bit, you can see the existing porch is gonna be repaired, but not changed in size at all. Um, so for from appearance sakes, there's not gonna be any changes. I'll share a screen here, if that's okay, to show you what the let's see, go. Are you all seeing a photograph now?
I'm actually seeing green. You need a, do you have access to um to share your desktop right now or no?
But I'm share screen, and let's see, I can be, okay, there we go. This is this, I didn't hit the right enough number, but it's there. Okay, hopefully you'll see.
It's still dark in my end, uh.
Are you seeing the permit?
Now we see it, thank you so much.
Okay, all right, so this is, th- this is all of the the documentation that you have, which is the, which is the permit set, uh, which was just a couple of shootings. Um, this is to show the major work, and I think my understanding was the concern was the not the concern, but the reason that this was presented was the cost. And the cost is basically the porch and bathroom repairs, and we put it over, I I guess, a certain threshold, and so that's the presentation. Um, as far as the exterior, there's not gonna be any change visually, um, except repairing what's there. Um, the only change to this porch will be the railings are thirty inches high, they'll all have to go up to, you know, current codes, and same with the stairs. Uh, and uh again, this was again a part of the permit set as well, which was documenting what was there. The fact is, I'm replacing everything in time, so uh very little change, actually no change, I think, to the exterior. Uh, uh, sort of brief presentation, not not a whole lot.
That's that's fine, y- you don't, you don't need to do the whole ten minutes, we're 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 fine, we're being prompt today, trust me. You could probably hold my voice. Um, so I'm gonna have Council member Chesek give you the whole Brian Neller's spiel. Uh, Luke, can you go ahead and give um the the official spiel in behalf of mayor and council, please?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Um, so just a few things to take notice when you're doing construction. Um, make sure no work starts before eight A M or after eight P M. Um, if it does, we get calls from angry neighbors, which means we have to call you. Um, so let's just not make sure that happens. Um, then we do have, and and Alma can share that information with you, she may have already. Um, we do have an um, uh, part of our code is meant to protect the uh tree canopy. Um, so the trees, so if you have trees on the property that are of a certain width, um, those can be protected. Um, and so there's a permitting process, um, if anything um there needs to be cut down, we ask that that, you know, we try to keep our um our 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 larger trees and all our trees in the city. Um, and then there is, if you're doing excavation, um, a lot of times, um, what we try to avoid is making sure that when excavation happens, that the clay is properly placed um i- in a way that if there's rain, the rain doesn't ca- cause sort of a a red clay river to to go into neighbors' yards, um, so be mindful of that as you're doing excavation. Um, and uh you might have put fencing around any protected trees, if you do have protected trees there. Um, and um, you know, try to keep the heavy machinery, it to the extent you're using any off of um the roots of those those trees, and I think that's that's everything, and Alma can give you the specifics of the that part of the code.
Absolutely, thank you.
Yep.
Uh, I did want to, I am considering, you know, it sort of depends on on, I guess, pricing, um, and I haven't permitted it yet. But I was considering putting a dormer on the back, um, and I wanted to just sort of present that. It it kind of hopes that if it did go through permitting, obviously I would go through permitting through the city, but maybe I wouldn't necessarily need to present it again. Or at a minimum, I would get feedback from you all to make sure that there wouldn't be any issues when I did have to present it later on, if if I could.
Um, Alma could better guide you through that, right? But if there's any design change where the design review board needs to be activated, you might have to go to them. And that's if you um need to get a special permit for it, okay? But um if, uh, where are you thinking of making the change?
Um. If you look, it would be, let's get to the, essentially, it'd be on the back. Um, nothing visible from the street, same finishes and everything else. Um, let's see if I can get a photo. It'd be on uh here, quite similar actually what the neighbor has and what's pretty much common in throughout the neighborhood. So it would be, uh, wouldn't be above the uh roof ridge, so there'd be, again, nothing visible from the front, it would be this piece here. Again, looking from the front elevation here, there'd be nothing visible. Um, what it does basically, i- it allows for a bathroom to be installed upstairs and moving, you'd have to sacrifice a bedroom to do that, and so this would become that bedroom.
So I would say think about what you're gonna do next, and depending on the timing, you might have to just come back to let us know that's been added. Okay, because um we try to make sure that at least the public knows what has been approved, so it makes your life a little bit easier, because when the neighbors ask.
Absolutely.
The permits in the front, but we could direct them to this video in case they have questions, okay?
Sure, for the record, the neighbors are quite happy, if something's happened in this house, I will say.
A hundred percent, so so are we, trust me, thank you for being here, I'm gonna pass it on to the council members to see if any of them have any question.
Thank you.
Okay, and I apologize for being a little brief, but I'm burning holding on, okay? All right, um, Jared, Valerie, Danielle?
Yep, no, just wanted, uh, thank you for taking the time to speak to us tonight, uh, Luke covered all the items uh that really uh, you know, that we need to flag for your attention, so I just wanted to, you know, again, thank you for taking the time to come tonight, and thank you for the work uh you're doing improving uh improving the house in our city, much appreciated.
Thank you, just quick question, would speak question for Alma for next steps?
So I'm gonna go through all the council members and then I go and then I'll head it back to Alma, okay? Because like that would, in case they have a question, they could address it. Um, Valerie, go ahead.
Um, thank you, yeah, I echo what Luke and Jared said, thank you.
Thank you, Danielle.
Um, yes, thank you, I'm really excited myself to hear that this house is getting renovated um and repaired, so thank you so much for investing in our city.
Thanks.
Luke, do you wanted to add anything, I don't wanna like take the opportunity for you to speak, um, if if you wanted to add anything else aside from the big uh Neller speech?
Nope, just, you know, you know, James, you just keep working with Alma and and she'll she'll help you direct uh if you need to go before the design review board on any of the changes you're considering for the dormer.
Excellent, thank you.
Alma, is there anything else to add on your end?
No, that would be all, um, we'll definitely get in touch with you, Mr. uh Yonkos tomorrow, um, and um the permit, the first phase of the permit will be approved tomorrow, so you're okay.
Very good news, thank you so much.
Yeah, we move as fast as we can, once you come to us, it it expedites it as fast as I can, Alma's team is very good at that, okay? And thank you for coming to our neighborhood, and we look forward, if you have an open house, let us know, we'll love to come check it out as well, okay?
Absolutely, thank you.
All right, thank you so much, thank you, Alma as well, and thank your whole entire team, all right?
Right.
Have a good night. All right, moving on to the next item, um, presentation and discussion of proposed F Y twenty five budget. Our city manager, Mr. Kamali, will present on the proposed F Y twenty five budget to mayor and council and have a discussion on tax rate. Uh, council members, if you have not gone to the office, your printed copies are there, available for you to pick up, okay? Mr. Kamali, the floor is yours, and thank you for putting all this work together, because I know it's a lot of work. Go ahead.
All right, thank you, Mayor, uh, hello, Mayor and Council, Mount Rainier resident and the staff. I am pleased to to present to F Y twenty five operating budget and capital improvement plan for this year, for city of Mount Rainier. Also, I wanna say thank you to all the directors and the committees for their inputs and achieving this goal. Tonight, we're gonna present the presentation to you, which we already sent it to you, according to the budget calendar, we should have sent the information by February sixteen, and tonight, we're gonna have a discussion on the budget. So as you see on the screen, uh, thank you, Melissa. I got a few highlights, which is the budget schedule, budget overview, budget breakdown, and at the end, we have, we are ready with Ron Wilson to answer any question. Next. All right, the budget calendar, as I said, on February sixteen, we submitted the proposed F Y twenty five balanced budget to mayor and council. On February twenty, which is tonight, the city manager will present the proposed budget to the mayor and council. And mayor and council hold a work session on the proposed F Y twenty five budget and discussion on the tax rate. On March seven, we have a notice to be published on the public uh for the public hearing scheduled for March twenty five, twenty twenty four. On March twenty third, which is the Saturday, big Saturday, that we have a public hearing and a public comment on the proposed F Y twenty five budget, mayor and council work session on the proposed F Y twenty five budget. On April the second, we will have the discussion on F Y twenty five proposed budget and the first reading of the budget orders into the record. Then we go on April the ninth, we're gonna have public hearing on the proposed F Y twenty five budget and discussion by mayor and council of F Y twenty five proposed budget. On April twenty four, when we do the second reading of F Y twenty twenty five budget orders and possible vote by mayor and council. And if we don't get the budget approved, then we have May the seventh and June the fourth, if needed, for the vote by mayor and council on F Y twenty five budget for the city of Mount Rainier, next. Here, on this slide, we have a budget overview, which is the goals that we have for this year to maintain the proper level and quality of the city infrastructure and services. Uh, pay the current cost with the current revenue, maintain stability of the tax structures. Next, please. Budget breakdown compared to F Y twenty four for this year, the real estate tax revenue continues to grow, but more slowly than in recent years, income tax revenue is increasing also slowly. The speed camera, unfortunately, revenue from the new citation is declining. This is offset by the collection of the old all deliquent accounts that we have on the speed cameras, and thank you to Chief for following on that one. And then we have Alpa funds will continue to be uh used in F Y twenty five, and we have to make sure that by December thirty first, we have to do all the obligation for Alpa. In the revenue chart, we're showing how the revenue is collected for the city, as you see that we have forty two. I'm sorry, I gotta go to my notes because, or Melissa, could you please click on each section, like, you know, the forty two percent, then I can read it. Or I can read it out of my notes, I'm sorry, forty two percent is the tax revenues, which the majority of the revenue for the city, forty two point four. We have um license and permit, which is four point two percent. We have intergovernmental, which is three point eight percent. Charges and charges for services is point two percent. Funds and forfeitures is five point seven percent. Miscellaneous is seven point six, as you know that miscellaneous here is a little bit high, because we have to use the fund balance one million for the pot salt. And then we have the grant, which is thirty six point one percent. And thank you to everyone to get more grants for the city. Next, please, then we go to the budget, budget breakdown, which we have five percent COLO increase for all employees. And I'm sorry, you know that inflation is too high, and we have to have some incentive and retention for all employees. In addition to COLO, the police officers, according to the C B A that we executed the last year, we have to give them two percent merit based on the evaluation that is done by chief of police. And the contingency for this year is forty seven thousand eight hundred sixteen nine dollars and point seventy four cents. And we have five hundred thousand dollars for the street and sidewalk, this is the twenty percent our match for S S four A, and we're planning to use one million nine hundred fifty two thousand eight hundred dollars in safest street if we get the grant agreement by March. Next, please, next slide. Then we have the general fund expenses, which I have to use my sheet again. And wages, we have twenty two point six for F Y twenty five. And employee benefits is going to be thirty thirteen point six percent. Materials and supply is gonna be one point seven percent. Repair and maintenance is gonna be one point two percent. And professional services is gonna be five point two percent of the total expenses. Community activities, we have one point six percent. And infrastructure and maintenance, we have six percent. Capital outlay, we have eight point two percent again, because of the pot salt, we're using the fund balance one million. Capital outlay, which is the pot salt and the vehicle purchases. It's shown eight point two percent of the expenses. Debt services, we have one point five percent. And grant expenses, we have thirty six point one percent. Next slide, please. Employees for F Y twenty five for fiscal year of twenty twenty five, we have uh city hall or general government is gonna be three. Full-time employees, administrative services, five full-time. Economic development, we have one. Public safety, which is the police department, we're gonna have twenty three full-time employees. Code compliance, we're gonna have four, public works, ten. Total full-time employees for the city of Mount Rainier and fiscal year twenty twenty five, we're gonna have forty six, which comparing to F Y twenty four, we're not adding any employees for this year, for this fiscal year. Ongoing developments, we have real estate values are not increasing at the same rates as the previous year. Taxable, personal income tax and the resulting income tax is increasing slowly. Grant activities is strong, and the city has significant Alpa funds to be used in F Y twenty five. Next, please. Now we have all the information regarding F Y twenty five, the budget summary over here, which I start with the revenue. Tax revenue for F Y twenty five is going to be six million four hundred seventeen thousand one hundred eighty one dollars and eighty four cents, which is three percent more than last year, F Y twenty four. License and the permits, we have six hundred forty thousand nine hundred ninety two dollars, which we have a drop minus twelve, if, and Ron can weigh in on that one. Intergovernmental revenue, that's gonna be five hundred eighty three thousand six hundred seventy and fifty seven cents, thanks to Governor Westmore, at least we can get some highway revenue this year again. And uh, as you see, we have eight percent. Charges for
Into the municipal league, because we fought for that one.
All right, thank you, Mayor, thank you. Also, charges for the services, we have twenty six thousand two hundred dollars, which is seven percent. Funds and forfeitures is eight hundred fifty five thousand, which you see uh minus, you know, three drops, which is a speed camera again. Miscellaneous, we have one million one hundred forty eight thousand five hundred dollars. Again, miscellaneous, because we have one million use of fund balance for pot salt renovation, that's why you see eight hundred fifty two percent increase. And then we have the grant, which is five million four hundred sixty seven thousand and eight hundred dollars, which is six percent more than last year, F Y twenty four. That's a good news for the city again, that we get more grants, and we can cover some of the operating costs. Then we go to the expenses. Uh, expenses, we have the wages and the leave pay, which is three million four hundred nineteen thousand nine hundred ninety three dollars and eighty seven cents. Two percent more than last year, which we see five percent of COLO due to the high inflation and retention uh for the employees. Employee benefit and the services for this year, we have two million sixty two thousand five hundred thirty five dollars, which is nine percent, every year we have increase in the medical expenses and uh other uh employee benefits, which is the workman's comp, and uh Ron can weigh on that one too. Materials and supplies, we we have two hundred sixty one thousand seven hundred dollars. We have a drop, we're trying to minimize some of those costs. Repair and maintenance is going to be one hundred seventy five thousand eight hundred dollars. Twenty six percent increase, we need to do some maintenance. And then we have the professional services, which is seven hundred seventy nine thousand three hundred seventy nine dollars and sixty six cents, five percent drop. Other services and charges, we have three hundred forty nine thousand two hundred eighty nine dollars and seventy four cents. Eleven percent drop, then F Y twenty four. Community activities, we have two hundred thirty nine thousand six hundred fifty dollars, which is minus fourteen percent less than last year, I believe that because of the arts commission, we're not pouring that much money, and we have not received their their proposal for this year. Infrastructure and base on maintenance, facility maintenance, which is nine hundred thousand one hundred dollars, which is sixteen percent increase. Capital outlay, capital project is going to be one million two hundred forty seven thousand dollars. Again, that one i- it has pot salt renovation, which is one million and two hundred forty seven thousand, we're buying the police, three new police corps for the police department. And then we go to the debt services, hopefully that one is two hundred thirty six thousand ninety five dollars and twenty three cents, because the funeral home will be finished by this year, we have one more payment, and the rest is gonna be the two million for the pot salt that we made the obligation last year. And the grant expenses is going to be five And the grant expenses is going to be five million four hundred sixty seven thousand eight hundred dollars, which is six percent more than last year. Total expenses with the grants is going to be fifteen million one hundred thirty nine thousand three hundred forty four dollars and forty one cents. I'm sorry, I didn't read the total revenue. Is the same thing, so we have a balanced budget that presenting to mayor and council. And the next slide is the questions. Thank you so much and I appreciate your patience. And if you have any question, Ron and I be ready to answer your questions.
Thank you, Mr. Kamali. This was um for the community. This is a quick run through. We are gonna go line item by line item next, but it's just like um if you're new to this process. Our city manager submits the budget to mayor and council, he reads the big numbers. And um budget will be available online. And the co-counsel, though they don't have the hard copy, they do have uh the electronic copy that was submitted from our uh city manager this weekend. Okay, so council, I'm gonna open the I'm gonna open the floor to you guys for a couple of questions. Um do remember that we're gonna go line item by line item. Okay, so you guys don't have to have everything we saw today, all right? All right, so Jared, I'm gonna start with you.
Yeah, uh thanks, Mr. Kamali. No, I just wanted to thank you again for putting this budget together. I know this is a it's a huge lift for you and your staff. Um you know, it's a complex process. I you know, just wanna say I you know, appreciate the thoroughness and sorry thoroughness and the um and um depth of it. Um I think um you know, just in general, I think broadly, and I'm really saying this for the benefit of the community, I mean, we're um I think folks are well aware, we've been in a situation um or U S more broadly with um substantial inflation, increasing costs. Uh we've done a good job of sort of, you know, managing our expenditures and also um you know, managing the uh you know, the tax burden placed upon uh folks as well. So uh I also wanna say, I just wanna commend you and your staff, part of the part of the way we're not um not having to decrease increase the tax burden by raising taxes is also because uh city staff have done a wonderful job of bringing in additional outside grant resources. So you know, a lot of that is reflected in our budget, which you know, looks bigger uh may look bigger this year, previous years than it has been. And then, you know, years past, uh precisely because folks have done getting in state grants and um uh and and the big uh the big safe streets for all ones. So uh directionally, I'm you know, really, really appreciative of where we are in terms of um this proposal, in terms of um you know, not being a place where we need to increase tax rates and uh where we are from an expenditure perspective. So that's kind of my my top level comments. So again, thank you very much.
Thank you, Jared. Uh Danielle Valerie.
Um yes, Mr. Kamali, thank you so very much for putting this proposal together and during the presentation. I look forward to doing a deep dive into the budget and will make sure to contact you with any questions I have and I'll look forward to this budget season. Thank you.
Valerie.
Um yeah, thank you. Um I think um in reviewing the budget, I mean, I think you and your team have done a fantastic job of growing the budget over the years and allocating funds um in a in a good way. So I really appreciate that. And I mean, just looking at the the bottom line numbers, you know, fifteen million dollar budget this year is is a huge is a huge number and it's a lot to manage. So um I'm looking forward to to opening it up and and really working through it with all of you. But I think we're in a good place and I echo what Jared and Danielle have said. So thank you.
Okay, um Luke.
Yeah, just thank you Kamali for getting this budget together and Ron um and everyone on staff for helping contribute to it. This is a lot of work and echo what Valerie said about this being a lot to manage um with all the grants that we've been able to get in, which is great news, but it obviously creates more work for everyone. Um I'll I'll work on trying to reach out to the arts commission on a figure there. I think that'll be one issue that'll come up of having some funding there. But um uh we'll get into that tonight and just appreciate everyone's work here. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, uh Mr. Kamali, thank you and the whole entire team. You know, you always get plenty of feedback from me, so it would not be tonight. All right, uh thank you for everything, okay? Um do you have anybody in the community that would listen, wants to speak? Let me know, put your name, last name. Street and block number on the chat. Um Jer- uh Jared is not here, sorry. Pink, okay, let me know if there's anybody on Facebook. Thank you, Pink. All right, and I see nothing on the chat. So um thank you guys so much and also to to the various um members of this council who have also like gone out there and we have lobby, we have reach and every little bit has helped to make sure we have uh the grants, the funding. Um you know, that's needed, even when it comes to like the relationships with the state and so on and so on, because like as an example, the H U Rs, the highway user revenue, every year we have to fight to make sure we have them and it's a significant amount. And the fact that we have them allows us to breathe a little bit, because if now we have to um you know, make up that that funding. So that definitely has helped and also like we have had several grants, allow them without matching. In various with minimum matching, but it definitely has helped that everybody's done their work and um and gone out there and gotten as much money as they can from the city and will continue doing that, all right? Um so thank you, staff and and thank you, team. You're right. So I'll leave it as that, all right? Ron Wilson's like, yes, I get to go home early. All right, not next time, Ron. This is this is like your your get out of jail free car, all right? Okay, so moving on to the next item. Okay, uh sorry, I could barely see. Okay, presentation, discussion, a letter affecting Mount Rainier Volunteer Fire Department. Have uh the oh, the Mount Rainier Volunteer Fire Department, there was a switch, right?
There there is a switch, mayor. I'm sorry, I tried to get your attention at the beginning.
That's that's fine. I'm okay with that. Okay, we'll make a presentation and current as it has reported, so I see Mr. Heinz here and who else is here from the wonderful fire department? Mr. Heinz, the floor is yours. And who do I see? Hey, Jason, how are you? My apology, more formal. Um so go ahead, the floor is yours.
Hey, good evening. Uh for those that don't know me, I'm Jason Fisher. I'm the fire chief here, Mount Rainier Volunteer Fire Department. Along with me, I have a John Heinz, who is the president. Um uh the Mount Rainier Volunteer Fire Department was established in nineteen eleven, soon after the city was incorporated. And we have been providing service to the city of Mount Rainier for the last one hundred and thirteen years. Uh we want to thank the mayor and council for adding us to the agenda tonight. What brings us to the city tonight uh was a press release titled Prince George's County Fire E M S Department Climate Destroying Volunteer System. That was dated January thirty first of twenty twenty four. And it was uh written by the Prince George's County Volunteer Fire Rescue Association. They represent the thirty seven uh volunteer fire corporations within Prince George's County. Uh we did attach the full press release to our our letter. Uh we didn't wanna spend the whole time on that, but we wanted to bring to the mayor and council's attention those matters related to that press release that affects the Mount Rainier Volunteer Fire Department. And we seek the city of Mount Rainier's support. We, the Mount Rainier Volunteer Fire Department, do agree that the climate of Prince George's County Fire E M S Department does make it extremely hard to operate a volunteer fire department within Prince George's County. And in fact, the Mount Rainier Volunteer Fire Department is a prime example of those difficulties. And to elaborate, I gotta give you a quick uh background, I think is appropriate. Um in Prince George's County, there are thirty seven individual fire corporations that work in combination system together with and under the authority of the county fire chief. Um to provide the fire protection to the all the Prince George's County. In recent years, the balance of the combination system has shifted heavily in favor of the county. The Mount Rainier Volunteer Fire Department is situation is very unique. In two thousand four, we moved out of our old uh owned fire station on Thirty Fourth Street into the new county owned facility on Rhode Island Avenue, along with two other volunteer corporations, one from Brentwood and one from Cottont City. When we moved in, we were told that we could uh operate as uh we did the before independently as three separate companies. But within a year, the county started to change the rules. And the county first stated that uh we would only be able to dispatch from the station as one company. And then the county then uh would only recognize one volunteer fire chief. And then uh the Mount Rainier Volunteer Fire Department were no longer allowed to submit new members. Um then our funding was cut off. All these things led to the Mount Rainier Volunteer Fire Department to file lawsuit against the county. In uh twenty twenty, excuse me, twenty nineteen, we won that lawsuit. And the judge ordering uh the following uh that the uh we were entitled to the rights and benefits the same as uh to the same extent as any other nonprofit volunteer fire uh rescue corporation in Prince George's County. That meant we did have the right to receive funding, we had the right to recruit new members and the right to operate uh within Prince George's County. So where are we at now? Um funding from Prince George's County has is stated in the letter, which is is attached. Uh it said one of the stations now only received uh two thousand five hundred dollars in program funds. Well, that's us, Mount Rainier Volunteer Fire Department, uh the the least funded of all volunteer fire corporations in Prince George's County. Um there's another center A M O S uh fund, which is state money that is designated to increase financial support to the volunteer fire companies to buy equipment. Uh we are approved for A M O S funding in uh twenty twenty two to purchase a support vehicle, a pickup truck. Uh but Chief Green overrode that decision by denying the request to add a support vehicle to the fleet by stating that uh the station had too many support vehicles. At that time, uh Brentwood, the other volunteer fire company in the station, had four support vehicles and Mount Rainier didn't have any. I mean, we we're not able to have a chief's vehicle, we're not able to have a support vehicle such as a pickup truck to pick up supplies or transport members to and from train. As far as recruiting um new members, it's been a priority of ours since uh we won our lawsuit to increase our membership. We had lost a lot of members during that period of time when we weren't allowed to uh get new members. But a lot of factors hinder recruiting new members. Uh we do agree with the Prince George's County uh Volunteer Fire Rescue Association, that press release uh that says the process takes way too long and impedes volunteer recruiting. Uh we had approximately forty six new member inquiries uh since that time of our lawsuit and only three have been able to make it through. It's like I say, a very lengthy process. Some of it's needed, the background check and physicals, but some of it takes way, way too long. You know, a lot of people are turned away from that. As far as identity, um the uh fire departments take great pride in their identity. Um you'll always see fire shirts and everything else that we have, right? So since nineteen twenty two, the Mount Rainier Volunteer uh Fire Department has been known as Company Three. Uh the word company and station are often used interchangeably. Uh in our situation, uh there was because there's multiple companies placed in the one station. Cog City was Company Two, Mount Rainier was Company Three, and Brentwood was Company Four. The county named the the station as fifty five, something to be independent since we're all being put as one. And so what happens there is uh with the uh council of government, COGS, uh mutual aid numbering system, uh Prince George- Prince George's County being eight hundred, you would put eight hundred in front of that that number, right? So our station here would be Station Eight Fifty Five. So what the issue now is, is county is planning to build a new fire station uh uh in Beechtree and that's in Upper Marlboro. Uh and they're planning to call that Station Eight O Three. So can the county name it Eight O Three? Sure, you know, they they legally able to, there's nothing that would prevent them, but why? Why? It it goes back to the climate that the press release is talking about. They're doing it for unnecessary reasons. They're gonna cause a lot of confusion because we're considered Company Three, Station uh Three would be very confusing, right? And also takes away our identity, right? So you know, very very much we're associated with being number three. So they're trying to take that away from our our volunteer corporation, having a station called Eight O Three. And furthermore, they're not taking in the fact that future uh what future holds, right? So we may not be in this building forever, right? We may move back into the city of Mount Rainier. And when we do, we want that station to be called uh uh Station Eight O Three, right? You know, we 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 looked at statistics before and we definitely think moving towards, you know, Chilim and Buchanan over in that area would be a better uh response area for that, still being within the city. And obviously, that's a, you know, uh futuristic uh hypothetical situation, but we still wanna reserve that right for that to be able to happen. And um definitely looking for the city's support in that. So in conclusion, this the Mount Rainier Volunteer Fire Department wants to thank you for your time and consideration this matter. Um after seeing the most recent events involving the county uh fire department and the Bellesfield Volunteer Fire Department, uh the takeaway was that was ensuring that the elected officials and the community are a part of the process. And we hope that uh uh this uh excuse me, we hope to rebuild our relationship with the city of Mount Rainier. And we hope that the city of Mount Rainier stands behind us and supports the Mount Rainier Volunteer Fire Department, your fire department, the city fire.
Thank you guys so much. Um I'm gonna take it to the council members, but before I do that, can you let us know what would you guys like to be the next step? We'd like us to sign, you know, write a letter and send it to uh the fire chief um fire chief Green, um let they know that we would like to keep Eight O Three um as Mount Rainier, not to assign it. Or what do you guys see the next steps on what we can do to like mobilize this um and how can we best support?
Yes, there's you know, definitely lots of possibilities. I definitely think that would be a definitely a a first step, right, for sure. And I think as we move along our relationships, as we go to make a move, say our funding's only a certain amount, then we're gonna keep the city abreast so that you also aware and support that that decision moving forward. Uh as as far as buying a new piece of apparatus, making sure that we're able to have support vehicles when we go for that and we're denied, we're gonna hopefully go to the city and y'all can support us on that one. And also being op- uh recognized operationally, they don't recognize me as the fire chief operationally. Um that's something we're fighting for as well. So when we go to that fight, we wanna make sure the city stands by behind us and says, hey, this is this is our fire chief as well. Why why isn't he being recognized the same as any other one as the lawsuit says? So yes. But the first step, definitely, we think making a statement that the city supports us that you know, with that with the letter saying that Station Eight O Three, that you're y'all trying to reserve that is definitely the first statement. It's that's what we kind of talked about initially, which was why that station number came up as as the topic.
Okay, so I'm gonna open it to the council members. I think the letter might be very easy for us to do. So we could work on a draft together to make sure it hits the points that you guys need from us. But my other um at least my step for me since um is to also take it to our center, Mark Magstine, our delegate Julian Ivey and delegate Fennell, so that where there were the situations, so that way they could support at the level as well. So um and obviously, county council member, uh Wanika Fisher, so that way we come in together. Um and if we call either sign letters of support, um so that was like a strong pull down on our end to try to get you guys on the support they need at all at all levels as well, so that we could be a little bit more successful. Okay, so okay, perfect. So I'm gonna open up to council while I have my brain thinking, but if not, if I had come up with something else in my head, I'll let you guys know and apologize. I got done with other presenters. I'm not feeling very well, but I needed to be here, you know, so okay, so I'm gonna go, Danielle, I'm gonna go with you first and then uh Luke, Jared, Valerie. Go ahead.
Thanks, mayor. I appreciate that. Um this this topic is a hard one for me. Well, it's both easy and hard. Um everyone knows that I'm a former E M T medic and um well, I came to Maryland from North Carolina to do just now.
Can I ask you a favor? I am so sorry. I just have it in my screen that it said time for now. Can you make a motion to approve at least uh ten more minutes?
Yes, um I'd like to make a motion to add ten minutes to the uh to the meeting.
Thank you. Any discussion, objection, extension here now in ten more minutes. Thank you, Millie. Sorry, go ahead.
No, thank you, mayor. Um I I came from North Carolina specifically to continue my emergency medical and my rescue career here in Maryland. Um I was actually recruited by M O Co. Um and originally was uh set to join in Kensington until I heard that uh P G County was where you wanted to run if you wanted to see some action. And as an adrenaline junkie, I wanted to see some action. Um so I came over to Station Thirty Four in Langley Park uh to do some runs, but then settled on Station Fifty Five because it was close to my new home care in Mount Rainier. That was thirteen years ago. Um while I ended up on Unit Eight Ninety Nine, which at the time was the all county ambulance unit, and then finished my career in Charles County on the mobile intensive care unit, Company Three was considered my first membership station. Those of us in fire and E M S do take tradition and history very seriously. So to hear that these things are happening with Company Three really bothers me to my core. What bothers me the most is the idea that the county would rather throw away the volunteers than use them to help offset the increased need for responders in a county whose population is not dwindling, but instead it's still growing. The beginnings of PG County, uh, Fire EMS is literally here in our backyard, here in Mount Rainier. It was in John Klein's Bakery at the corner of Bunker Hill and Thirty Fourth where it all began. When lots were picked out of a hat to choose the company numbers for the original four stations in the county. This was before any paid crews stepped foot on a unit. There were no paid crews, there were only volunteers, and Mount Rainier has this distinguished history attached to us. Those numbers that were chosen that night were not just any number, a station or company number is an identification, like, uh, Chief Fisher said. Um, it's, it's for anyone who ever served there for the county, for the, the first four, the history, both in county and Mount Rainier, it's important, it's who we are. I fully intend to do all I can to protect the station and the company number from being assigned to someone else. Um, whether it's writing letters, signing letters, making phone calls, I'm gonna do everything I can. And I will ask that the others on council join me. And that will present that, and I will, if we don't, hopefully we will together now to hear, uh, Mayor, saying what she did. Present a letter at the next business meeting for that purpose. Um, I would also ask that, um, the others on council help me continue to protect Company Three by helping me to reinstate them into our charter. They were actually removed from our charter from city protection back in the nineties, and I'd like to reverse that course. We are quick to thank them for their service because they are willing to run out and help us in the darkest of hours, and trust me, I know I've been there. Now they need us, and I would hope that we can, as a city, return that favor, thank you very much.
Remember, we have less than three minutes, guys, I love you, but I can only hold so long for tonight. Alright, go ahead, uh, Luke, I think was next, I'm sorry, I forgot the order, Luke, Jared, Valerie, go on.
Yeah, thanks, um, I appreciate you guys coming out here and sharing your experience with us and, and what's happening here, so we can try to, try to help you. Um, is, has there been any conversation with the county about like, hey, can you guys just pick another number? And they're like, they not respond to that, or what does that dialogue look like?
No, they're very, um, uh, that they, they, they're allowed to do it, they're gonna do it, yeah, um, so. They, it's there, they don't really care that, uh, we were three, they, they don't consider us three, is actually what they say, they, they don't.
But is, yeah, is there a logic to their picking of three, is there like, have they given any sort of logic as to why?
No, none at all.
That's weird.
To, to, take for example, the county had a fire station over in Chevrolet Tuxedo, and it was number Station Twenty Two, Chevrolet Tuxedo. The county took that station over from the volunteers, and then they closed it. I don't know if they still own the property or not, but there's a church there in the, in the building. They could use Eight, Eight Twenty Two for that station.
Yeah.
You know, there's, there's an example right there, you know, number they could use, they could use Eight Sixty Seven, you know.
There's, there's, there's a, I'm sure there's a, so, there's a plethora of numbers available for their choosing.
Yes.
Anything that starts with a hundred, um, okay, perfect, I will say maybe not recommend that Chevrolet, because I don't want to get into a fight with Chevrolet in case they wanna honor that number, and they might be making the same claim that we are, alright? Um, and so I want to be respectful of, of Chevrolet, um, and that, okay, so whoever I said was next, go ahead. Was it Jared? Go ahead.
Yep, it, yeah, it was, um, so I just wanted to thank you both for taking the time to speak to us tonight, and also thank you just for your service and for all the folks that are, um, you know, volunteering and working over there, uh, to protect our community, um. And, uh, just, you know, obviously very supportive of things that, uh, approaches that continue to help you maintain your autonomy and also bringing the resources that you need, so I think just do a very high level, um. Thanks for bringing this to our attention, uh, giving us the visibility. Um, I did get a chance to read the, um, press release in, in, in detail, and it, it, uh, you know, provided a, a window, not a great one, but a win, over a very clear kind of understanding of what's, what's going on here. So, um, just can you, can you clarify me for me again, I'm, I'm sort of a little bit new to the, this, the, I guess the number, the renumbering issue, I mean, I, obviously there's a brand and a history there, but, uh, can you kind of clarify what the sort of impacts or signals it's?
It's pretty much your name, so your number is your name, so it's like having somebody change your name, or, you know, somebody else having another, somebody else call another name in the same station for no reason, right? So, you know, you can have another name, somebody can be another name, but why would you choose to pick somebody else's name that's already there when you can choose any other name? And what, but, but there's gonna be confusions because we are listed in databases within Prince George's County as Company Three. So when the new station comes across, there, you know, there's gonna be, if the supply comes to Eight O Three, so, right now, we get it as Eight O Three and Eight Fifty Five here at the station, so there's gonna be more confusions, listed in our databases, our members are listed as Eight O Three and Eight Fifty Five. They, they, they very confused amongst each other, they're not one set number, so, some, some of their, uh, officials call us just Eight Fifty Five just at the station, but then some of them call us Eight O Three, so, like I said, the biggest thing is definitely identity and definitely, uh, confusion about who, who is what.
Okay, no, no, definitely, okay, I definitely understand. Um, just kind of tying them back to the letter that the, um, sorry if I get the, the Prince George's Volunteer Fire Association, if I got that right. Sent, um, you know, there's a lot of issues that I think it, it is very clear the volunteer fire departments are experiencing across the county, yourself, I'm assuming as well, um. Are, are you looking for some of those concerns to be uplifted in the letter as well, not just, not, I mean, obviously just the, the number is a, is an issue, the numbering is an issue, but are there other concerns that you're looking to have elevated at the same time?
Yeah, so I think we want to definitely, uh, start with one thing and then, oh, go along, and as long as we have each other's communication open, and as we move forward with each progress, we'll keep the city, uh, abreast of what we're doing, so as if we have that next problem going forward, we'll bring it to your attention and, and look for that same support. So definitely, I think the initial thing of having a main support to know, the, the fire department knows that y'all behind us and supporting us, they won't mess with us as much, and hopefully things go smoother from then.
Yeah, okay, no, that's, that's perfect, and I would just like, look, as we, you know, as we've kind of, us and other electeds like state and county, um, you know, I think if we can call, you know, if we're coming together, I don't want to, I want to make sure kind of bring, bringing the concerns together, you know, not piecemeal over a, over a series of time, right? But, um, oop, looks like.
Yeah. That, that's the, that's the line of the work, there twenty-four seven.
Sounds like a very important distraction, so.
Okay.
All right, we weren't able to turn that off in time, that's.
No worries.
You're, you're fine.
That automatically comes up, but yeah.
Thank you for the answers there, that's, uh, uh, what I was looking for, and I, we're again, appreciate both your time.
Yeah, and some of those matters, I think we need to address as, as a whole county, so some of those matters in there as a county, we need to address. Recruiting as a whole needs to be addressed, uh, it, you know, as a whole, not just Mount Rainier, that's something the whole, all the county, uh, municipalities and all, any, any of the thirty seven volunteer corporations have an issue with, you know, so th- those things as a whole need to be addressed.
And, and those are conversations that we can echo and uplift with our fellow minister, oh, I'm sorry.
I love you so much, but if we're going back and forth our conversation, I'm gonna have to add more time, and I'm not doing this. Valerie, the floor is yours.
Um, yeah, thank you for bringing this to our attention, um, just, uh, um, uh, I'm sorry, can I make a motion to add two more minutes?
Hmm, uh, can you make it four so I could speak?
Four, make it four.
Okay, second, any objection, extension here, none, four minutes.
Okay, um, thank you, yeah, so thank you for, uh, coming and bringing this to our attention, just a quick question. Um, do you know what the timeline is, uh, for these decisions? Like, are we looking at next week, these decisions being made, or is it like a, a year timeline, the station's being built, things like that?
So they're, they're planning, the county is planning to build a new, uh, Station Eight, uh, O Three, which is the, their Beechtree Station. Now, they haven't broke ground or anything, so it's not tomorrow, right? Um, but they have already identified that as the station, so when they are, you know, working, that's the number they use. So that's something they can easily change because the station's not built, I don't think it's in this, uh, FY budget, so I think we have time, so. Yeah, a year or so for sure, but I think now is appropriate to make sure we know where we stand.
Okay, thank you.
So, um, I'll tell you what the next steps are, Jason and, and John, um, can you guys do a very strong draft letter? I mean, that letter, and we'll work it on, uh, my end, and the letter could go out by Friday, if need be, right? It doesn't take much for me to do those, those decisions, but we don't have to wait until the next meeting. So if you guys could hit the points that you need to make a song, a strong, solid, uh, draft, and in our, and I'll finalize whatever needs to be finalized, so we could send it out and notify our delegations that we're supporting you guys, because my thing is like, once they start building and documents, start putting the number on it, it's very easy for them to continue addressing it as such. And I definitely want to make sure we get in front of this, and um, I can't think of my agenda right now, I don't think I have any meeting right now where I'm gonna be meeting, um, Chief Green. But in case I do, I also have that, what am I ready to part of like conversations with her, okay?
Sounds great, I appreciate it.
Sounds great.
So if you could get that moving for us as soon as possible, so send a strong draft, so I hit the points that you need us to hit. And then I could put in a letterhead for the city and, and send it out and alert the rest of our, um, delegation, this is what we want. So that was not even, um, considered, um, they could go another one, and you said the station is in Upper Marlboro, right?
Yeah, Beechtree is the community, it's in Upper Marlboro, right off of Three.
Okay, so I might have to make a call to friends up there to say like they don't want that number, because they, they say they want, we don't, and we want to keep it in, in my help, so, no promises, but I'll be making calls this week to make sure that they, um, they said, um, any other number but three, okay?
Uh, we appreciate it, and we look forward to continue, uh, relationship, so this is just the beginning, so thank you.
Perfect, thank you guys so much, and, um, I will say goodnight, but I know you guys are at work, so thank you for everything you guys do, and the city newsletter will continue, um, adding the blog of like recruiting volunteers like we have been doing, um, in order to make sure that we alert the community that, um, you guys are taking volunteers and, you know, and thank you for everything you guys do, we appreciate you guys very much, okay?
Thank you, and if there's something we need to do for y'all, reach out the same way, you know, it goes both ways, so definitely, and yeah, I know you have my number, Mayor, and.
Oh, a hundred percent. And thank you guys for, um, riding along with Sana in the very, very cold weather. Um, along with our police department, that was very kind and sweet, and the community really, really appreciate, so thank you guys for making always, um, the yearly route, we're very happy with that, thank you guys, and obviously for the parking for Mount Rainier Day and everything else, okay? Thank you, guys.
Uh-huh, thank you, thank you, everybody, thank you.
Bye.
Bye bye.
Alright, moving on to the next item. Discussion using funds from riding fifty-five four five, city sponsored meetings for city sponsored events with Mount Rainier Elementary School and Thomas Stone Elementary School for Black History Month. I'll be discussing using the line item for fifty-five for system, uh, with city sponsored Black History Month event from Mount Rainier, and, okay. That's a big paragraph, just to say, we have an event on Friday sponsored by the city and both PTOs. It's gonna be a community potluck along with a movie and a discussion. Um, it is gonna be hosted on Mount Rainier Elementary, and we work very well together with them. Originally, I was gonna put that money out of my pocket, but our beloved city manager was like, Mayor, you spend a lot of money out of your own personal pocket, consider using your line item, and I said, I'll bring it to the meeting. So here I am, Mr. Kamali, listening to your advice. But, um, so basically, it's gonna be the funding I need to use for my, um, for my mayor line item, basically to buy some food, to bring to the community potluck and, um, at least have some, but we're looking forward to a wonderful event, and, and that's it. That, that's my big presentation, alright? So I'm gonna open up the floor for if you guys have any questions, if not, we can move on. Okay, so Luke, thumbs up, Valerie, where are we? Thumbs up, Jared? Good, Danielle? Alright, so Mr. Kamali, there you go, following rules. Thank you so much, okay, thank you, guys, and I hope to see you guys Friday, it's a wonderful movie, you know? Sorry, uh, presentation submitted, uh, the clerk will present the minutes for January sixteen work session and February sixth, uh, legislative meeting both for twenty twenty four. You guys have them on your package, anything, reach out and submit it, there's a one on this today, so it's just an FYI. Before we go to a German, can you put the events on the screen, Millie? Okay, so we have there the Black History Community Movie Night and Potluck for February twenty-third, Mount Rainier Elementary School, and this is combination with both PTOs, Thomas Stone and Mount Rainier Elementary in the city. Gateway CC and the City of Mount Rainier Film Screening, My Brother's Keeper. The director is actually a member of Gateway CC, one of, one very young director, very talented, so they're gonna have a panel to discuss this film as well. Community Conversation will take place on March second at eleven AM on Thirty First Street in Perry. This is like, uh, street improvement, this is like maybe the third meeting that we've had in that corner, along with other community, uh, conversations that we had online here. Uh, we have the budget here in schedule for the twenty-third, the public hearing for the twenty-third. The econ for April sixth, ten to twelve, in Mount Rainier Day, our big day will be May eighteen, and I would like to take this moment of privilege to congratulate council member Valerie Wodall on her assignment for National League of Cities as, um, a member of like the advisory board for the precedent, um, from Rancho Cordoba, right? Our current president, so Valerie, thank you so much for representing us, um, at that level. And I look forward to hearing all the wonderful things you're gonna do with all your wonderful experience, okay? So thank you so much, alright, um, in doing that, can I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll motion.
Second, second it.
And you guys are taking forever to second that thing, alright, so probably move and second in discussion, objection, extension, hearing none. Uh, this meeting has come to an end at eight oh five, uh, thank you staff for the long hours of work and for everything you guys do, okay? Have a good night, bye, everyone.
Hi, thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Steph.
Thank you.
Thank you.